And it's going to rotate between different, like you guys talking and here. So the screen may show this up here, but that doesn't mean that that's what they're seeing.
Good evening. Welcome to the January 21st, 2025 meeting of the Everett Planning Commission. Ayanna, would you please call the role?
Chair Chatters.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins.
Present.
Commissioner Ballard.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Here.
Commissioner Shelby.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Atkins, would you mind reading the land acknowledgement?
Certainly. We acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Shahobes people, and their successors, the Talalup tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. Commissioners, we've all had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes from our January 7th meeting. Is there any objection to approving the minutes as they were written? Okay, without objection, then the meeting minutes are approved by acclamation. We now have an opportunity for commissioner reports. Commissioners, do we have any reports this evening? Okay, with that, we'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening. Yuric Stevens, Wajda Planning Director. We've got a second round on the transportation element this evening, and we'll get into an introduction on that first. But first, with staff comments, I got two points to cover for, we have a couple of vacancies on the Planning Commission and conducted a few interviews and are recommending two appointments that I believe will be at tomorrow's council meeting. So if all goes well by next Planning Commission meeting, we can expect to have those two new members. Staff will meet with them and try our best to orient and catch them up to all of the work that we've been doing over the last couple of years. I, and Alessandra and I, attended a council retreat on Saturday. The city council held an all-day retreat to talk about a number of items, one of which was the Everett 2044 periodic update. We specifically focused on the process and the end game towards adoption later this year. So I presented two items that I handed out here and will have online on the Planning Commission webpage as well. One of them is a look back at all of the meetings that the Planning Commission and the topics that we've covered. Thirty-two meetings we have gathered here and talked about the periodic update, moving through its different elements methodically up to where we are today. I count, we won't likely go past forty. So we're at maybe thirty-two out of forty in the overall progress here. Remaining elements are not, and then we have a calendar for, and this is focused more on the council, but you see Planning Commission meetings on here as well. The remaining elements that we have not brought through the Planning Commission are economic development, marine port, healthy communities, public facilities, and engagement administration and implementation. So we need to bring those five elements or goals and policies as we've been doing through the Planning Commission, and then we will fill in the rest of the plan. A lot of those building blocks in those thirty-two meetings, we've covered the text, the analysis, and all of the other pieces that go into the various elements. We will bring that all together. We will touch on regulations. We've also gone over a lot of the important regulations along the way, zoning map, use matrix, and other housing-related and other types of regulations, but we'll bring that together. And looking towards a final recommendation out of the Planning Commission in May, we think we could get to a final recommendation from the Planning Commission sooner than that, but we have a rule in the City of Everett. You may remember it from the Park District, which is that staff cannot give a recommendation to any advisory committee before the final environmental impact statement is issued. We need a thirty-day comment period at least, plus some time to work before we can issue the final, between the draft environmental impact statement and the final environmental impact statement. So working backwards from that, we are aiming to have a complete draft of the plan, regulations, and a draft environmental impact statement by the end of March. We will send that complete draft to state agencies, Puget Sound Regional Council, and issue the draft environmental impact statement, do a round of public comments for a month after that, and then issue a final environmental impact statement, which includes responses to comments received in the DEIS phase. At that point, we would be clear to make a final recommendation. We have some points in there for the council to provide some more significant amendments from what they're seeing. We're going to be bringing stuff to them. It won't be a complete product with a lot of time for them to review. It's going to, they already have the same parts that have come through the Planning Commission, the goals and policies, the maps, and things like that. So we're asking for more significant amendments around that March timeframe, so we can incorporate those into the complete draft plan and the environmental impact statement. And we're still working through exactly how we'll process that with a council as a whole body. And then, of course, any amendments can happen all the way up until the final day by the city council, although if it involves environmental review, that could incur some delay, which is why we're asking for any big-picture kind of changes to come a little bit earlier. Ultimately, our goal is to have all of this adopted in time to be effective before the state's middle housing regulations take effect in the end of June. Early February, so after we get done with transportation element this evening, we have those other five elements that we need to get to. We were thinking that we would take the next, the early February meeting off, if that works for you. We've been working you all hard, and it's difficult for us. There are only two weeks between meetings to staff these meetings, and then already by next week, it's time to get the next packet out. So we'll try to get as much as we can on maybe two or three of those elements ready for the late February meeting, if that works. And then we'll see where we go from there. We may be able to take one other meeting off between now and May.
Are we free to assume that since that's the next meeting, we can discuss taking that off right now?
Yes, that'd be great.
Commissioners, how do you feel about that? That would mean the eighteenth would be a pretty robust meeting, but I think we could take the fourth off the calendar if we feel in agreement with that?
Sounds good.
Yeah? You sure? Because I just see you guys wanting another meeting. I can see it in your face.
You gotta hear the roll call?
Yeah. Okay, so we'll take the fourth off the calendar. And you said there was a second one perhaps, but maybe we can deal with that next time and see how things are going.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. That's it for me. Anything else? Any questions?
So you on the, you have an open house for 2044. Is that the last and only open house? And I assume that's going to be down at Warehouse or something similar?
Yes, thank you for flagging that. Yeah, we're, we've done a couple of these, maybe five or six of them along the way. I, this could be the last one that's in an open house format. We'll have structured public hearings before the Planning Commission and the city council. Lots of other opportunities for folks to engage, but I don't know that we have another open house scheduled after that. One facet of this open house is we're targeting it specifically to board and commission members throughout the city. So we'll talk when we get into transportation. We've worked through some of that element with the Transportation Advisory Committee, and we've done a lot of work with some of the other boards and commissions. But everyone who is on a board and commission has a special attention to the City of Everett and would have a good perspective for the comp plan. So we're extending a specific invite to all of the boards and commission members. It will also be open to the general public, so everybody is welcome to attend that one.
Additional questions? Okay, we have an opportunity for public comment. Ayanna, do we have anyone signed up to give public comment in person?
No, we don't.
Do we have anyone online?
No, we do not.
Okay, excellent. Then we're ready to move on to agenda item number four, transportation element of Everett 2044.
Opening the show tonight.
Yes, we gave you quite a robust briefing last time, so we're going to go light on the briefing this time, but we wanted to give a little attention to transit that we didn't touch on too deeply in the last one. So we have Sabina Raya, Everett Transit Deputy Director, to give an overview of transit. And then we have the same cast as last time for any questions you'd like. And then Alessandra's got an exercise for us based on the questions that we sent to you ahead of time. Sabina?
Thank you, and thanks for having us back here. Last time, we took a deep dive into the transportation element, but a light touch on transit. So Yuric suggested that we have a conversation today with you on what your vision is for Everett and connections in Everett and the layers of multiple services that we have in Everett and how we better serve our community in the future. So I thought I'd start out with highlighting some of the ways that transit is integrated into the policies and goals that you have before you in the transportation element, and maybe ask your opinion on what else we can include in there, or how your vision of the next twenty years would unfold on the transit side. We're excited about transit. I'm excited about transit because it's such a crucial element of the transportation network, and it really is one of the most critical resources we have to manage mobility. So as you set goals on land use and decreased parking requirements, transit becomes a more needed solution for transit, for mobility in Everett, not just for work trips, but socially and to grocery stores, to the mall, to recreation. And so how we layer that service within Everett becomes the conversation that we need to have right now in conjunction with all of the rezoning that you are planning for. Everett Transit is a department of the city, so we operate within the city limits of Everett, and we are responsible for integrating transit services and mobility solutions in the city of Everett. We work with partner agencies, Sound Transit, Community Transit, many other regional services, and coordinate that service in both pathways for, you know, avoiding duplication of service, but making sure we maintain coverage, but facilities as well. An example of that, we have very many transit centers in Everett. We have connections in the south, the Seaway, Makatiyo Ferry, the biggest transportation hub in the county is Everett Station. And we have multiple providers there. We have Skagit Island, Skagit Transit, Island Transit, Community Transit, Sounder Train, Amtrak, Flix Bus, Local Service, Bus Rapid Transit, all converging into this major transportation hub, right, a few, a few blocks away. The transit portion of the plan outlines all of those existing services. It doesn't just talk about the local service, although that is what we can control and coordinate. But it touches on the existing services available for residents, both from outside of our jurisdiction and, you know, coming inside, going out, and within Everett. So an example of how we weave transit in, it's part of the multimodal transportation network. So goals one and three talk about Everett's multimodal transportation network and how it's developed, and its use in supporting both growth and making sure the community needs are met. Another example of that is goal number six, talks specifically about Everett's public transportation system as a whole that would seamlessly provide options that are convenient, safe, comfortable, equitable for residents, visitors, workers. It's a tall order. Do we have a really robust system now? We do, and it'll be even more robust in the future. The guidance on that goal is taken from PSRC's Regional Transportation Plan, which focuses on increasing the number of boardings and increasing ridership. So we have a goal of tripling ridership by 2044. And a portion of that is the local system. Some of that is also the regional system, so the estimated ridership that Link will provide, as well as the expanded Bus Rapid Network that Community Transit is planning. All of those services combine to increase mobility options in Everett. Another goal that touches on what we do is goal number eleven, that talks about having, reducing impacts to climate change and being mindful of our environment. And of course, that is what we do. We took, we had about one point, close to 1.8 million boardings last year on Everett Transit alone in the city of Everett, and that is huge. That is a huge reduction in trips within the, within the city and connections to regional services. But we also add to that electrification of our fleet, which is in our work plan. We also are overseeing the commuter production program for the city of Everett jurisdiction. So Everett Transit administers that program for over thirty employers in our jurisdiction and works with them in offering employees options, transportation options, being there, talking to employers about incentives and how we can best serve you. So we are, we are pretty mindful of our impact, and we are doing everything we can to, to reduce it. As I mentioned, our local network includes local transit, but also associated peri-transit services. We have local transit connections. So Community Transit has a number of local routes, 201, 202, 270, but also their BRT service, the Swift Blue Line, the Green Line, and the South to Seaway Transit Center. We have regional commuter service, Sound Transit, routes 510, 12, to Linwood, to Seattle, to Bellevue, 532. We have Skagit and Island. We have Sounder and Amtrak. We have Flix Bus, and we have, Boeing has its own employer shuttles. So we have lots of options. Alongside with that, we are mindful of the infrastructure that supports transit and accessibility to transit. So pedestrian and bicycling access to transit stops and centers is also outlined in goals seven and eight, because they work together. We, we care that people can get to our stops and have accessible ways to get there. What we're looking forward in the next twenty years in terms of our transit network, the biggest milestone obviously is Light Rail with its stations in Everett that will completely change the way people move from North Everett to South Everett and beyond. We will connect our network in such a way that we reduce duplication of service, maintain coverage, and take advantage of that really, really big milestone that we're all looking forward to. Community Transit will expand its BRT network and continue to do so. They've started with their first route, which was the Blue Line, back in 2009 in partnership with Everett Transit. And with voter support in 2016, they have planned for a network of BRT routes that will connect cities and jurisdictions. Locally, we are excited about expanding service, connections, increasing frequency, and exploring on-demand services like the zip shuttles that CT has. We realize we have some coverage gaps in neighborhoods where our buses don't really fit very well, and we have had not as high of a demand over the years, but still need some service, like Valley View and the Silver Lake area. So those are the things that we, we plan to integrate in this update and plan for. So we develop our local service in that context. Two things are important, regional connections and travel within Everett. So the supportive infrastructure that I mentioned before, but things like safety of stops, amenities of stops, distance to stops, all contribute to how comfortable people feel to take the, the bus within Everett, because it's not that far to get from one end to the other. So if you have a lot of transfers, or if you have to walk too far to the stop, it becomes an inconvenience, and so people will be less likely to do that. So those are all the barriers we, we will try to remove and work towards removing. So those are the, kind of the areas covered in the goals and policies. The policies are more detailed in directing us to coordinate with jurisdictions, to, to make sure that we grow our network to accommodate growth. With all of that come a series of projects and programs that will support, that have a cost associated with them. Even though the transportation element is not cost-restrained, we know that we have some capital projects associated with what it means to deliver service in Everett. So in this update, those, you'll see a list of those as well. For the transit portion, we allocated them of, based on the, the six-year TIP that you see on a regular basis, but we expanded that to the twenty-year horizon and made it into broader categories. You know, we put fleet replacement all-in-one. We need an operation space. We need a vehicle maintenance facility in the next twenty years. So those are all capital, bigger-ticket items that we will need help with in the next twenty years to support our service. So what's next on the horizon for us and how we use the comprehensive plan? Everett Transit has a long-range plan that takes the guidance and direction from the comprehensive plan and has a more detailed network of growth of service over the next twenty years. The very first one that we did was in 2018. If some of you were there, we've, we've presented that, put that together. And midway, we looked at the financial picture. We realized that what we would like to deliver and the ridership that will, that will need to support growth wasn't financially feasible. So we midway also developed a sustainable network that will help us be financially responsible until we get more revenue. Our last sales tax increase was twenty years ago, and agencies, some agencies are double our sales tax authority already for many years. So we've been very nimble. We've been very efficient. We have about four times less ridership, but ten times less budget and staff to do all the things that we need to do for Everett. So we have a tall order ahead of us. And your support and guidance, I think I've heard some questions last, last time on what, what can we, what can we help you with? I think conversations on layers of service, more local, more, you know, what are the connections that you've, you've heard in your community that are needed? Is there a process that we need to engage in to make sure that we in the future have a way to get more revenue? And our long-range plan update is based on this comp plan update. We started it last, in 2023. We plan to go for a Phase Two outreach for that in the summer and have adoption of that in March of '26. So it's kind of a iterative process. We take the comp plan, we develop a long-range plan, and we do updates to it. So I'll stop, I'll stop there. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Questions, commissioners?
So I don't know what, do you know the name of this document? That we got last time?
Is that the existing?
It's listed data. It's, was handed out as one of the...
Modal split?
Yeah, well, the question is a modal split. So I mean, so we see that most categories went towards the goal, so transit went away from the goal. So transit ridership is down from 6.2% in 2011 and now at 3.9 in 2022. So, but it didn't give any reasoning why? So is there thoughts or, and then are there programs, what programs would we, are, that you see that might be more helpful to support getting that back towards, towards the goal for the city?
Can, before you answer that, can I add to that question? So ridership is down, and so you said the goal is to triple ridership by 2044. Is that based on the pre-pandemic levels, current levels? Like, what is that goal based on?
That will be based on what we want our baseline to be. 2023 is regional, the next Regional Transportation Plan update will have 2023 as a baseline, a new baseline for service. Our, we've exceeded pre-pandemic levels in getting our ridership back. So we are kind of on the fast track to, to increasing ridership locally. We are smaller, so we were able to add service back faster to those pre-pandemic levels. We did notice that ridership, it was in 2008 when gas prices are high, transit ridership increases. We followed that kind of curve. Over the years, locally, we have had a couple of service cuts that were more significant. In 2012, we have a service cut, and in 2018, nineteen timeframe. But in general, it's availability of service and how comfortable people feel. Obviously, the pandemic just threw a curveball in all of the agencies. So as a percentage of the population, it really depends on where people move into. Apartments downtown are more accessible to transit, for sure. So...
So it's, so, and pre-pandemic, then, were you, so this goes back from 2011 and shows it dropping, and obviously we don't have the data in between. But with pre-pandemic, would it showed it actually increasing, and you're trying to get back to there, or was that also sliding down pre-pandemic?
It was a little bit of, there was a high at one point in time, and I can't remember exactly the, the timeframe, but I believe it was in the 2008 where we were at 2.5 million boardings, and that was kind of the highest that we've seen in Everett. And that was before the Swift BRT service was introduced, and our Route Nine took people from Everett Community College all the way to Airport Road. And on some trips, we had ninety-nine people on, on a trip. So there was standing room only. We don't see those conditions as much, although our ridership has increased. So it really depends on the economy or where people are working. A lot more people are, post-pandemic, are driving to Light Rail versus taking a bus to Seattle. So we see a shift, but we've seen a ridership increase steadily to 2019, a sharp drop in 2020, and then a climb back up to where we're now.
So to be clear, we are at pre-pandemic levels currently, or we are not at?
We are. Everett Transit is past pre-pandemic levels.
Exceeded pre-pandemic levels, okay.
Yes. We've officially, for 2024, we were at 1.75 million boardings, which was higher than, a little bit higher than 2019 levels. So, yeah, we were...
Because Everett rocks. Regionally, there was a slide in last presentation on the Regional Transportation Plan dashboard, and transit boardings regionally were at sixty-five percent of pre-pandemic levels. A lot of that is driven by a cutback in service. The service hours are at eighty percent regionally of pre-pandemic.
So what I am hearing from folks who use our transit system, particularly for, like, retail workers who work outside of the nine to five hours, is that oftentimes, they cannot catch a bus home. If the retail stores run until, they're open until 11:00 PM, our workers can't catch a bus home. And so that is a very serious challenge for folks who are really struggling at the lower end of our, our economic strata in the first place. Are there plans to, to address those things? Because we talk about how we want to evolve our city to be able to accommodate folks, you know, getting around without cars, but we, realistically, we don't even have the ability to get our retail workers home at the end of a shift.
Definitely, span of service is always a topic of conversation and a trade-off in whether you add frequency on a route, or you add span of service to add service hours. We have buses running as early as four o'clock, as late as eleven, but not all of them do. So it depends, really depends on, you know, weekend is, the span of service is a little bit less. Swift Blue runs past eleven o'clock. Um, Swift Blue runs past 11 o'clock. So I guess, um, we can always, we can out, always add span of service to our service if we know if there's, uh, a particular, um, demand on a particular route. I, Route, our Route 7 is our highest ridership route, runs from Everett Community College to the mall, so it has the biggest span of service, um, and carries, uh, half our, half our riders right now.
Yeah, and that's, that's really, uh, kind of the route I'm talking about. It's seven and 29, those are the ones that are really, really common, very well utilized. And, and so I would think that the, the end route times would align with the closing times of the businesses, and they don't, uh, which is what I'm hearing from community members. And that is a very specific challenge for a very specific group of people who are already really challenged with all of the other economic, uh, issues in this city. Um, so that, that's one thing that I know, I've heard directly from community members. They would love to see us, uh, set goals that address those types of gaps.
That's great, thank you.
Commissioners, additional thoughts? Mackenzie, I, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sullivan, I'm always curious to hear what folks in Silver Lake are saying. I know that you attend those meetings frequently, and ridership, um, on that end of the city can sometimes be challenging, limited route access. Do you hear feedback from the community out there on this issue?
Um, a lot of the community that I interact with consistently are not riders of the bus. However, I live off of a very busy road that a lot of people use to get to the bus. And I see them walking in front of the daycare where my son goes all the time, and it's super dark. And even though there's a sidewalk, the thing that comes up with other community members around different transportation topics, not necessarily buses, is sidewalks and lights. Um, and it's important, right, we all are, or yeah, of course, but to your point, if you have safe walking to the bus and then there's no bus, seems to be a bit of a challenge. Um, so, I mean, I see consistently, like, I could see, I see the same people going to the bus all the time. Um, so I know that there is a ridership. I don't know if our ridership is high as other neighbors, um, or neighborhoods. Trying to think if there's anything else, because I was trying to noodle through this a minute ago, too. Plus, we're really close to the park and ride, so I think I could see a lot of riders going to the park and ride to then use a different city's service.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of great information on that, but those are my observations so far.
Commissioner Shelby, how's District 3 looking?
I, I honestly could not tell you, um, what our, what our ridership is like, uh, other than last time I looked, uh, once the bridge, uh, at Edgewater closed and they changed the route, the ridership for that particular route went up quite considerably. And so I don't know if, what I'm curious about is, um, how did a closure of a road end up with such increased ridership? Like, how did we not see that? How did we not get that feedback from the community that modifying that route was going to result in that particular change? And what other things are we missing? Like, why were we blind? Um, the other thing I had, uh, is what is our percentage of fare recovery? And what does it cost us to just make transit a public service, like, for everybody at no cost? I mean, we're already paying for it, we should just pay for it.
I, I have actually been told by folks that the numbers don't mesh there, that we spend more collecting, uh, fares than we receive in fares. Um, and I'm wondering if that's true.
Um, I'll first, to, to answer, kind of, your question on, on the routes. On Macalteo Boulevard, we actually had a commuter Route 70 that, um, was taken away in the pandemic and was restored with a new Route 18. So actually, increasing the ridership of Route 18 was a combination of that Route 70, which was the commuter to Boeing, which has still most of the ridership on that route, and then P, folks that continue over to downtown or Everett Station on that trip. Um, Macalteo Boulevard is not the best trip generator, um, out there, unfortunately. And so, um, we didn't see that people necessarily missed that service, they just adjusted. It just takes a little bit more time, and that service is primarily used by people coming on the ferry and wanting to go to work and, and back. So, um, that was, that was kind of a little bit on that. As far as fares are concerned, um, I will just, I don't have the exact percentage, but I can certainly look that up. For 2023, um, for example, um, we, our fare box was a million dol, a little over a million dollars. And our total expenditures in operations, um, and that includes fixed route and, uh, peritransit, uh, was close to 29 million. For fixed route, uh, we're looking at 18 million. So a small percentage of our operating costs are actually covered by fares. Uh, we do participate in the Orca Regional Card System, um, that also takes resources, um, but it also gives people an opportunity to pay less on a trip that connects to another trip. Um, there is also some, um, at some point in time, and I'm not, I would have to double-check now, uh, there were federal, uh, FTA implications on running a fare-free system, like Island Transit was doing, and not being eligible for some grants, uh, because of that. Um, there was also some safety concerns on, um, having no, no fare requirement for, for folks that would just come and kind of just hang out on the system. Um, and so there is, there's certainly, with the youth, uh, fare going to fare-free, um, that we saw that as a huge bonus. Um, obviously, that came with some money from the state to, um, to help with that, but in a greater degree than the youth fares would cover, so that was great. We put that into service. Um, but yeah, that's also a conversation, um, that as a policy or as a goal, um, it's up to our elected officials and, and, and people that are, um, in your position to kind of tell us what, what direction you'd want Ever Transit to take. It certainly fare recovery is not, is not, um, it's not how we, how we keep service, but it certainly, it, it helps. A million dollars is a million dollars. It's not, it's not, um, it's significant.
Would there, I, I would assume that if you were not collecting fares, there would be a positive time impact to not have that fare collection. Um, so, I mean, these, unfortunately, we can't wave the magic wand here and make it so, but these are all really good things to consider. And along the lines of safety concerns, I've, I've heard it both ways. I've heard folks concerned about the safety issue if there's no fare, and I've also heard about safety concerns around demanding collection of fares, so.
Yeah, we've, um, over the years, um, and we've, we've adopted a policy to where the drivers do not engage in fare disputes. Um, that's for everybody's safety. If there is persistent fare evasion, then it's, it gets escalated to the inspector level and the agency level. But on the street, um, you know, somebody says, "I can't pay," um, we don't argue with them. So that's been our, our policy.
Additional thoughts on this piece specifically?
Does Everett Transit have a preferred site for the new Light Rail station?
Um, yes. We've been working, uh, with our planning, uh, with our planning department in a preferred option for each of the site locations. So we, um, for Mariner, Airport Road, Southwest Industrial, um, Evergreen and Casino from the option, and Everett Station from the options, um, we were at the table and saying, "This one would work better for transit." Um, this one would be a little more challenging. Um, so, um, definitely, y- yes. I don't know if Yurik would want me, he would probably not want me to say. Um, I think the city is working towards developing staff recommendations, um, that the mayor can then take and discuss in the Sound, uh, Sound Transit Board conversations, right?
Yeah.
I asked the question.
It's complicated.
It is, it is complicated, yeah, there, there are a lot of variables. So I asked the question because you made the comment about, um, the success of transit and being near density, you noted downtown. Um, I agree that citing the Light Rail station, the Everett Station, as close to downtown makes a lot of sense because of the amenity base and, uh, the density of residential units that are either existing today or are planned in the near future, so.
And certainly with the stadium location, that conversation is, um, needs to be, to be talked over a little bit more and seeing how, uh, we can accommodate the Light Rail station as close to that as possible.
One other question I had, and this is a little off-topic and very micro, is there's often talk about a walk shed from, uh, transit stop. I've asked before about, um, validating the data. Um, it, I, I'm, I'm still unclear as to why there's this magical quarter-mile, half-mile walk shed. Uh, seems to be a quarter mile from a local service and for BRT and other regional service, a half a mile. If it's raining sideways, a quarter mile seems like a long time, regardless of where I'm going and how fast.
I think the, typically, with, with both time, uh, frequency of buses and both distance to the bus stop, on average, it would take half of that distance. If you're, if you're somewhere in the middle, you wouldn't necessarily, if, if bus stops are a quarter mile apart, chances are you're going to walk a little bit less than that. So that's the, the idea of having local stops a quarter mile apart is that, um, ideally, that's the maximum distance you would walk. Um, so it seems, you know, that's a couple of blocks, it seems reasonable, about five to 10 minutes, um, on average. For BRT stops, the half-mile is a little more challenging because it's a longer walk. Um, but that's, uh, made up by frequency, so you, you wait a little bit less at the stop. So, um, those are kind of guidelines from, uh, regional transportation authorities, um, that were just adopted into what we practice. But locally, um, I'll give you an example in the North Broadway corridor. We have the, we have 10 stops in each direction between Pacific and 10th Street. And, um, that seems to be reasonable, they're all very well utilized. Um, so, um, that's kind of what our ideal setting would be, similarly, and.
Yeah, given the data tools that are available now with Placer and other technologies, are, are you able to track what the true walk shed is for your ridership? That would be interesting data to use in contrast against these kind of standardized distances that get tossed around, and I'm not sure if it could validate it.
Um, I agree, and it definitely varies based on, uh, how accessible those stops are to the neighborhood. Uh, obviously, if you don't have sidewalks, even if you have a, a bus stop close by, um, a stop close to Eastmont on 19th, um, there, or a couple of them at least are very challenging to get to. So that, that does matter. The data, um, that we get, we don't really get that granular. I have stop level, um, ridership, how many people got off on the bus, at the bus stop, how many people got on. But, um, it's very, it's harder to put together a picture of origin destination, right? We have major, um, I can, I can say what are the top origin, uh, points? What are the top, uh, destination points? But we have very little data that tells me this person got on here and got off here. We have a level of that with transfer activity on Orca cards, because you tap it when you go and then you tap it when you transfer, but you don't tap it when you get off. So we don't really have that, um, full picture. Um, I know that we're looking at some travel modeling or travel information, travel modes. Um, other agencies have used cellphone data for some of that, right? Um, so I think we, um, in working with our employers, we looked, um, or have asked for zip code information. So we know their worksite location, if, uh, we don't need personal information, but if we have a number of employees from each zip code, that kind of gives us an idea of travel patterns. So, yes, it's, it's limited, I would say.
It's all I can do to not start researching it now, because it's a, an interesting question. I think it's a, it's an old kind of standard, both of those. I think they're rooted in studies where they did analyses of where ridership comes from and typical, whether it's their stated preference or whether you actually see a significant jump in people within that distance. Obviously, the closer you are, more likely you are to use a service. It's an important one, both for planning a transit system, stop spacing routes, where you decide to put extra service and balancing coverage versus frequency and reliability and all those things. We're also going to have to check in on that with, for instance, the accessory dwelling units. We had a parking standard around that, and I think we have some other parking standards that connect to certain distances, to certain levels of transit. The state has, uh, three or four definitions, and there's a parking bill this year that would add a, I think it's three that there are now in, uh, in, in the 3670A, and there's going to be a fourth one there. We'll get some information on where that comes from to help inform those decisions, which I think will be coming through this body in, between now and May.
And that's, that's exactly why I ask, because these walk sheds inform a number of development decisions that we make in the Planning Commission and dictate policy going forward. Um, if we're using a walk shed that was established based on San Diego data, where it's always nice and I'm happy to walk a half a mile, um, we're probably doing ourselves a disservice given the availability of information that's out there now.
I have to say, I haven't seen, uh, a guidance on less than a quarter mile spacing for stops, for local stops. A quarter mile seems to be, uh, a pretty small, um.
Make the trip rather.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, level of service goes down, that the time on the route obviously goes down the more you're stopping. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, I'm thinking more along the lines of development regulations. And if we are, um, requiring no cars, for example, um, within a certain radius of a transit stop, um, if people aren't actually using that transit stop, then we're just creating more cars on an already, you know, jammed network of parking. So, um, to scale the data and kind of right-size it relative to our local conditions, I think, is important.
Um, I can actually confirmly say that the four to six people that I watch take the bus live more than a quarter mile away from the bus stop. And there is, uh, and I looked at a quarter mile, it was about, was it five, five blocks? So that sounds out right-ish?
I don't know.
Give or take, okay. Um, none of them live less than five blocks, because I live five blocks and they all walk further. And there is not a consistent sidewalk in that quarter of a mile. In fact, there's no sidewalk.
I believe everything you're saying, but I don't think it changes, um, my point. Is that if we're, if we're, uh, promoting the development of housing units where people actually don't change their behavior, we're making conditions worse on other parts of the network. And I think the goal for transportation, as we've discussed, is mobility. Um, and so as a result, we may be hurting ourselves by using these metrics that don't necessarily apply.
The data, um, the data that we do have is, um, if you are interested in a development in a particular area, we can tell you how many bus stops are in that area and what the ridership at that stop is. And that might give you an idea of, of ridership or walkability, or kind of go from there and exploring why, um, that stop is underutilized, for example.
I agree with Commissioner Finch. Um, similar to the idea that you can't compel development, you can't compel developers to build, you can't compel people to ride buses and use other modes of transportation other than driving. And so it has to be convenient. So I'm looking at the goals, and I, I, I would like us to articulate in the goals that, that we are, are seeking convenient options. Um, I love that we want them to be safe, but that's not good enough. They have to be safe and convenient, uh, because we cannot compel people to use these services. And if these services are not meeting needs without people having to, you know, do some form of, of accommodating something or another, uh, they're just not going to use them. And, and so that's going to impact our ability to meet all of our other goals if we cannot put together a convenient multimodal transportation system. So I would love to see that articulated as a specific part of our goals.
So goal number six addresses that for the public transportation system?
Yes, it does.
But not in the goals one and three, so.
Or in seven and eight.
Okay.
Um, pedestrian routes need to be convenient, bicycle routes need to be convenient. And like, for example, um, Route 7 and 9, which I think, I think these, the materials I read. Yeah, it's like three-quarters, like 75% of the ridership is Route 7 and 29. And yet, when we look at, for example, the bicycle routes that the city is creating, um, they're pushing people kind of away from those. They're routing bicycles away to prioritize parking along those arterials instead of bike routes, which, you know, those are obviously highly utilized routes. So this kind of speaks to the whole idea of convenience. So I guess that's why I would like it to be articulated. So I guess that's why I would like it to be articulated firmly and repeatedly, that part of the goal here is to build a system that is convenient for users, because it's the whole chicken and egg. We will never get ridership if we do not meet the needs for convenience of the public.
I do think that that brings up an interesting, I guess, paradox on our end, too, is, I mean, we can get more transit users when it's, excuse me, when it's more inconvenient to drive a car than it is to use public transit. And like, there is a reality where, like, of course, there's gonna be that awkward middle space. But in the example of like, not having places to park, I mean, I hear that, and I go, well, that's gonna compel people to drive if they're having to, or not to drive, to take transit if they're having to walk half a mile to go get their car. Like, after a certain point, it just becomes a point of convenience that where it's just easier to take the bus than it is to take your car. And we see that, I mean, of course, with the mention about gas prices, that when we see gas prices go up and it becomes more inconvenient to drive your car, even if taking the bus hasn't become more convenient, more people are willing to take the bus, just because taking their car has become less convenient.
So this is anecdotal, but it strikes me that when the demand is high enough to live in a specific place, I think you're right, people will mode shift. When the demand to live in that specific place isn't high enough to make that mode shift, they'll just find another place to live. I'm not sure that's what we're going for here. I mean, I think about even people that live in major cities. I myself have lived in many major cities and owned a car. You visit that car less frequently, but you still need that car from time to time. Maybe that's because I was, you know, growing up on the West Coast, and that was part of how I thought about getting around, but I still think that, especially when it comes to new housing, it's denser, hopefully it's more affordable because we're approaching or trying to promote middle housing. There may need to be that flexibility to own a car. And so, again, just setting ourselves up for success to kind of promote the level of density and new housing starts, balancing that with transit, just, I'm not saying there's any right answer, but I want us to be thoughtful about that and use all the tools we have available to us. Because zip code studies were great, you know, 10, 15 years ago, but we can know a lot more now than we used to based on anonymized data that services provide and track. And so I just, I'm encouraging us to think more specifically about how to be effective.
And that's in the thick community production world, availability of parking at employer sites is a big driver. So you see that there's a difference between, we're not quite there yet in Stonewall County and in the city to where that one's, parking is not available.
I do wanna go back a bit to talking specifically about Route 18 and Muckelteo-Polevarde. So something that I've seen within my own community and just people that I know and myself included, that when Route 18 made that switch of no longer offering weakened service, that folks that I knew that don't have cars or don't like driving were no longer able to get to Howarth or Harborview Parks. And it just seems like if we're trying to get people to make that mode shift, that not having weakened access to possibly our two most scenic parks, I think is, I mean, that's another further negative for not having a car in the city. And it seems like it's, I don't wanna say disrespectful, but it just seems frustrating for the poor members of our community and just other folks who, for whatever reason, can't drive, to just be denied that access, especially to Harborview. I know with Howarth theoretically, you can get off at the three and make your way to Howarth, but Harborview especially, there's no alternative besides the 18.
Thank you. I don't see them as negatives, I see them as goals to work towards adding. So I thank you for that span of service, weekend service.
I had a quick question, because I can't read fast enough while we're in here. Do you have community outreach as one of the goals, or was that one of, is that, do you have community, which one is it? I know I read it earlier, but like, is it a policy?
It was the first policy.
Okay, thanks, because I'm looking at the goals. It wasn't there.
And we'll also, engagement isn't unique to transportation planning. There, one of the elements was engagement, administration, and implementation. So when we do a final look through these, maybe some, I don't know if it's best to have policies on engagement in the different elements or all in that one, but agreed on the importance.
Okay, I won't go too far. I had just written down, if you wanna have bus riders, you have to raise bus riders, which brings back to you have to be engaged with the community, especially families or people at an early age. Because my older son does not understand the bus, and I'm like, I was riding the bus at your age, but he does not know what I'm talking about. So it's hard to raise a bus rider when you don't engage with the bus. Commissioner Ballard, please.
On the, going back to the, we're talking about convenient and being safe, on the safe, so like, if I think about the intersections of like Evergreen and Casino Road, that's a rough intersection. It's got a lot of things going on, and we shop there weekly or every other week. So coming out of that Fred Meyers, the people going across, so they're running, not all of them, but a lot of them are running to get buses back and forth. So when you look at safety, or you think about safety, I guess, what aspect, who actually kind of covers that? And I know there's, it's a nightmare intersection, but I'd be interested in seeing that as a priority.
That'd be my point.
And then also, well, and I thought that, so I don't know when I jump over, but that same question also, if you look at the intersection of Airport Road and Evergreen too, and that's, you know, if you look at your traffic data, I mean, it certainly replicates both vehicle and pedestrian deaths and just high, and there's some other places too, but they certainly stick out. And I was, I had a reason to be down there for over a period of time, and just sitting there on that light going east on Airport Road onto Evergreen, you sit through that light maybe three times. So you sit there and you watch these moms and children and just all these people, and they get off the bus here, they have to transfer, or they cross that street, and then they cross it again to catch that bus there. It's just a, it's a nightmare, it's just scary. So, and we look at people taking the bus, and I'm thinking, how many people just said, I'm not doing that, right? So it's not that they don't wanna use that, so you're not really, I mean, there's probably would be more fatalities and injuries if people were actually using that. So you're losing people ridership there, so just safety in there.
I would just say that pedestrian safety is definitely one of our top priorities. We're working on the Citywide Safety Project, which primarily emphasizes reducing fatal crashes. And to paraphrase a member of the Everett Police Department, whoever is at fault in a pedestrian vehicle crash, the pedestrian still loses. We're working to address that, and some of it is pedestrian behavior, some of it is driver behavior, and it is a real challenge, particularly for Everett, for whatever reason. I'm very familiar with both of those locations, having actually done studies at both of them, watching these exact issues. We are working on it. That is the best I can say at this point. We're certainly, as goals in our policy here, to provide a safe pedestrian network, bicycle network. Those are the essential goals. We're working towards it, and we are acutely aware of the shortcomings in that area at this point.
I think as areas that were actually losing life, I would kind of think that they would be a priority.
They, yes, they are, absolutely.
Has Everett Transit done studies with Everett residents asking, like, I'm just thinking of a marketing study, like, where you just bring people in who meet your demographic criteria, and you pay them to be there, and you ask them about their experiences? And like, has Everett Transit done a study like that with Everett bus riders? I think it's challenging, because the folks who tend to be on a lot of the boards and commissions, those of us who have the privilege of being able to volunteer in these roles, we often are not bus riders or users of some of these systems that we're advising on. And so, I mean, we try to listen to community members and bring those voices, but hearing directly from the people who are using this system, and you can tell you things like, yeah, my shift ends at 11, and I can't catch a bus at 11. Hearing that from those folks would be so useful, and I'm wondering if we have done that.
We've done that every time we do a service change. We have a comprehensive outreach plan that touches all of our riders and the public in general.
But I'm asking specifically if you have done that, where you have sought out people who meet specific criteria, paid them to come and sit in a room and answer questions about their experiences.
No, not in that environment.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So just kind of a general call to the community for input? And so that's what I'm saying, is there needs to be a more targeted seeking of input, rather than a general call, hey, we want your feedback, like, literally doing what a marketing agency would do, and finding people who meet this criteria and bringing them together, and really challenge them to say, hey, tell us everything about how you're experiencing this system.
Yeah. That's a great input. I think the last time we addressed our writers, but based on what we proposed, so we hear from our writers along the year, we put together a service change proposal, and then we put that out for them to comment on. And it's specific to what we can afford to make in terms of changes or what we can add. The bigger, comprehensive, more like, community-based approach was when we did our long-range plan update, and some efforts were done in that regard for, but not focus groups, more a broader approach to the public in general of rethink transit were some of the recent efforts in the first phase of the long-range plan, kind of those are. Our upcoming long-range plan update would be a great opportunity for that.
I do just wanna further underscore your point about the need to make sure that we have service for kind of those end-of-shift workers. You know, I just bringing up my own personal experience, I used to work at Mikey's in high school, and my shift would get over at like 10:30, 11:00. And then I would be forced to, at times, I'd miss the final bus, and I'd be forced to walk from Mikey's all the way over to the old Cocoon House near the transit station, and that was a very scary walk to make at 11:00 at night as a 15-year-old. And I just, I mean, this is not just about making sure that it's convenient for folks, but also just the safety of our workers.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So you were talking about, like, on Eastmont, or there's places where you know that the sidewalks are missing, or whether it's difficult to get there. Is that, do you have that listed? I mean, do you have that? Is that a list that maybe we're going after grants? Is that a priority list for public works to help, or, you know, fund that if, as money comes up? Is that known and written down somewhere, so it can actually be tracked? And maybe even the quarter mile or the half mile for people that are more sturdy?
Yeah.
I can answer that. Ultimately, we have an inventory of where we have sidewalks. It has not been correlated specifically to the walk sheds around transit stops. That's actually one of the items that is being updated as a part of our comprehensive plan at this point, is updated guidance on where to prioritize our sidewalk investments. We have a draft, there are a number of things. We are looking at locations, basically, if everywhere becomes a sidewalk priority, nothing becomes a sidewalk priority, so it is a challenge. We've identified things like major arterials, transit facilities, parks. We are looking at those things, and one of the pieces that will come out of the comprehensive plan update is clearer guidance on how to prioritize where we make our sidewalk investments. I don't know exactly where that will go, but an emphasis has definitely been on those multimodal connections, and there is no more multimodal connection than the walk shed to a transit stop. So without, at the risk of promising something that isn't in the plan, it is definitely, it is definitely one of the primary considerations in updating that walk in priority, which will guide where we make those investments.
And I can, I.
ADA transition plan?
We also have an ADA transition plan that requires the city to have a, and that is why we have a full inventory of our sidewalks and ramps. And ultimately, the investments in that are sidewalk and crosswalk investments, and they are largely, where we prioritize those is also being driven by that same prioritization discussion, which is at a draft form at this point and will be included in the final version. The guidance on that will be included in the final version.
Now, if I can add to that, is in practice, whenever we disrupt or a land development happens and it disrupts our bus stop, we ask them to be made ADA accessible. We are not removing stops if we can't replace it with an ADA accessible stop, so that's why you still have those grandfathered stops in, that we still wanna make available to folks, because we don't want to remove it, but we don't have means to replace it immediately. So it is, it is on our radar, too.
Another gripe, since I'm just unloading all of my grapes.
That's great, thank you.
Do you need a cup?
Thank you, Allison, I appreciate that. Well, because, I mean, I've talked to people and I ask them questions about these things. I wanna know how they're experiencing these systems. And so I know that there's concern about there being bus routes into neighborhoods, and I know that we have limited ability to expand everything all at the same time. But one thing that could make that easier is if there were safe and secure bike storage at more bus pickup locations, so community members could have an option other than walking themselves. It's a lot easier to bike a quarter mile than to walk a quarter mile if you're trying to get somewhere quick, but they have to take their bike then with them, or they can't bring it, or, because there's just nowhere safe to leave it. So maybe finding ways to give people safe storage for their other modes of transportation to get themselves to the bus pickup locations. And yes, I'll take my bill now.
Jessica, thank you. Somewhat related to transit, it looks like there are a number of goals that relate to a variety of different modes of transportation that don't all play well together. So bikes and cars don't interact very well together. The movement of freight and pedestrians don't play well together. When we think about where we have our areas of the city planned for density, I wanna make sure that we're being forward-thinking about how we align those priorities. So they can't all be of equal priority in all parts of the city. And so when it comes to, you know, hopeful development patterns around downtown, and, you know, the kind of the gradient of development density, I would encourage the Planning Department and those in transportation to think about the movement of freight, making sure that we are putting investments in places that, for the long term, make sense, meaning not bifurcating neighborhoods, especially if they're growing, because we wanna increase the pedestrian activity between those growing neighborhoods and downtown where culture and amenities are. Things like that. I'm hopeful that we're contemplative of that, but all of these goals and priorities, they can't really be equal in all areas. And so just be thoughtful, please.
If I can just add, that we're acutely aware that there are some modes that don't belong on the same facility. I would say, though, that rather than saying can't apply to all areas, each facility, each road, may not be able to accommodate all of them, but all areas of the city should be able to accommodate all modes, just potentially with a parallel route. An example would be, we have identified a bicycle route that uses Hoyt, which is a lower-volume local street that parallels Rucker, which is a much higher-volume, less safe street, that puts you 300 feet east of, but not on a heavily-traveled freight and vehicle route. That still covers the area. So we are definitely trying to address that challenge. You cannot have all modes have equity at exactly the same level on every facility. We're attempting to identify, in a lot of cases, parallel facilities that provide, let's say, comparable saturation for access to a neighborhood, but prioritizing some modes on some facilities and other modes on others in an effort to separate them and increase everyone's safety. And that's definitely the goal that we've been working towards, and it's our intent that that come forward out of this comprehensive plan as a clearer goal.
I think what you just said is a much more intelligent way to describe what I was hoping to get out of it.
Well, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
I've only been thinking about it for 20 years.
I think that for me, I live to the south and west of downtown, and so walking to downtown when it's not raining sideways is wonderful, until there's four semis that you're waiting for, one of which, you know, runs the pink light. These are challenging situations, and so when I think about increasing density to um to the south um of Pacific, um and potentially, you know, to the west of West Marine View Drive, um areas where we have capacity for middle housing, uh and I think about the movement of freight, I'm wondering who's gonna win there because um it, it seems to be that, that maybe in conflict. So whether there's a overhead crossing that can occur, um or a somehow calming of those streets, but making those streets um going south out of the port um wider and more oriented towards freight is somewhat concerning if I take a long-term view.
And at this point, we're, in that specific instance, we are looking at designating exactly one route where you do have a larger, wider crossing, where freight will then ideally be directed to only use this route and all other streets will have an improved safety and then we can really emphasize the safety at crossings along that route by knowing this is the big spot where we're gonna have heavy vehicles and pedestrians conflicting. That's certainly what we're trying to achieve. We can't move the Port of Everett. Um, so traffic, freight in and out of the Port of Everett will have to circumnavigate downtown in some way. We're trying to figure out how to minimize the conflict points, that's one of the key pieces of engineering. Um, but you're absolutely right, that's a, it's a major challenge to, to figure out how to get all those pieces to work together. Um, I view it to some extent as job security because AI, AI, AI is still at least months away from being able to do that part of my job. Uh, but you're right, it's, it's an extreme challenge and trying to the, to the extent possible, separate those modes to avoid conflicts, but not in a way that reduces um access for any mode is our current, our current process that we're working towards. But you're right, that's one of the hardest locations to deal with because we have, and it's not just normal semis, we have windmill pieces, the Port of Everett and it, bless them for their creativity aggressively courts weird, large, heavy awkward stuff, which makes it even harder because a route that would handle semi-trucks with containers all day, every day without a conflict still runs into problems when you've got a two-hundred-foot-long windmill blade and then twenty-four more of them coming over the next month or three. It's been a while, but we've had that happen, it's a serious challenge and we definitely want to, again, to go back to what the police had to say. No matter who's at fault, pedestrians lose when there's a conflict, so we're doing our best to minimize or eliminate all of those sorts of conflicts in the city.
And I think that does tie into transit because with increased porosity across Pacific and across Everett Avenue, um, it provides people kind of greater, safer, more convenient and attractive places to potentially live, access the services downtown and take advantage of transit that already exists.
Did we hear a summary of the freight mobility study? I have not had an opportunity to read it in its entirety. Um, were we going to hear a summary of that or?
That is a separate uh project. Um, the, we have guidelines coming out of the comprehensive plan for things like the development of, the city of Everett actually does not have a freight route ordinance. We have no legal authority to restrict vehicles to specific roads. That type of thing is what's coming out of the comprehensive plan exactly with the recommendation to produce that. What that looks like is a separate study. And so that's, we have some ongoing design work specifically and I'm not the best person to speak to that because I'm not managing it. But in terms of the longer-term picture, we're, we don't even have a goal in our current comprehensive plan that addresses freight. We are making it a goal that freight needs to be addressed because if you don't consider it, how do you address those safety concerns? Um, and, and at the comprehensive plan level, it's really how do we balance these various modes and what are the priorities for them and how do we work through them? Which will then inform those subsequent projects to look at um a little more. In terms of, I can tell you, in terms of freight, the port has one identified route, we want them to use Rucker to go to forty-first and we are working aggressively to both make that the obvious route and to create a situation where it is um, I mean, at some point prohibited, but at the very least strongly discouraged to use some of the other routes through downtown. For example, I don't want trucks using Rucker north of Pacific at this point, they have no business being there. We don't have a legal authority to do that, that's a couple of steps beyond where we are currently at. The first step is the comprehensive plan giving us guidance on what those ordinances should look like. And that's where we're, we do have information to some extent on that.
So I see that's recommended under goal TR five. Everett has a safe, reliable, well-marked and implemented freight
Mm-hmm.
routes to meet mobility needs.
Yes.
I actually had one highlight on the freight mobility section, so can pivot that way unless we wanna, sorry, I'm not trying to take over unless we wanna keep going to transit. But if we're-
Let's ask, do we wanna keep going with transit or do we wanna switch gears and, and talk about uh freight mobility and maybe some of the other elements? Sounds like it's a yes, Commissioner.
Okay, cool. Um, well, since you said these are new for you, great job. Um, I only had one question really, which was on the uh tier thirty, right? So the actual um policy part. Encourage the use of energy-efficient and clean delivery vehicles. Great idea, how? I wasn't really sure how, like what encouragement.
That is an excellent question. Um, there are a few different methods and I don't know exactly what we would use. Um, the main ones that Public Works and the transportation element would be able to uh work on would be um supporting charging infrastructure, um supporting even, even things like um for Everett Transit, we're working on inductive charging at layover points.
Sure.
Um, developing, and I'm not saying this is where we are planning to go, but these are the sorts of things that could be done. Um, if there is a staging area at the Port of Everett, developing a project to have inductive charging for the trucks while they are waiting at that staging area would be one um type of um element. It's a way bigger than a Public Works piece.
Sure.
Things like tax credits for, which were available for passenger vehicles, um, supporting a similar project for freight to convert if it was promoted at a state or federal level and that would be outside of the city of Everett's ability to directly implement, but we have a policy about coordinating regionally and supporting those sorts of um initiatives would be the sort of thing that would result in that.
Okay, so back up, cause I love real-world examples. Um, it, hmm, did you say inductive charging?
Inductive charging.
Okay, inductive charging. Is there already a demand for that today?
Not that I am aware of.
But hopefully soon?
Well, there is a demand for it from Everett Transit. We've actually installed inductive charging, not just in their bus yards, but also at least in a couple of spots on street. So there is demand for transit. In terms of the freight world, I am not, I don't work in the consulting world anymore, so I'm not a hundred percent up on that mode shift. I know there have been discussions about electric vehicles. I know in some areas, electric e- even, I believe.
Daymore's making them.
Well, I, I'm trying to remember if it was one of the other ports, one of the other ports in the Puget Sound has actually been um mandating electric vehicles for like the short hops between yards and things.
Yeah.
Um, that's outs, that's, that is a, that is not a transportation piece, that is a much higher-level policy piece.
Sure.
But things like that would be-
The reason I ask is-
And I, I do know that this technology is there.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
Like the forward-thinking behind is a good idea. So obviously freight mobility, it's, you, these are, I'm not totally familiar with all this stuff, so this is like great to talk about cause it feels very new and I don't have a lot of opinions on it, um, but I have a lot of questions. So I like that idea, cause I like the forward-thinking aspect of it. And essentially what you're trying to say is if we have strong freight mobility and we have a good plan and a good infrastructure that just increases people to want to come to Everett with their freight and use our port, right? So it works together and, and then it's safe.
Economic support and safe.
I love that, right, it's all coming together, so I think that's um fantastic. I, I did just wanna specifically call out um manage on and off-street loading space to ensure adequate access to deliveries and businesses. I think that's a really good thing, I don't know if this is overlooked or if it's just an annoyance, but like I would be okay with giving up a parking space to make sure that a delivery driver can safely get off of the road so they're, they're not in the way of bicyclists and cars. And so this is, I mean, right, it, obviously we're-
That crosses a lot of different lines.
But I do, I like the idea of safety for the driver and safety for the pedestrians and the bicyclists.
I, I agree completely.
And the business.
To some extent, it's already unlawful to stop your vehicle in the middle of the road just to get out and make deliveries, but it's not-
It's not, but when you're just not good at pulling over.
Yes.
It's actually weird.
I was just saying, it's not, it's not very well enforced and the reality is if it was enforced, you're right, there needs to be a lawful spot for it. Those are the sort of discussions that we have been having. Um, both needs for parking, needs for loading, absolutely, um, needs for deliveries in neighborhoods. Um, because there are two pieces to freight, really, there's the
Yeah.
huge piece comes into the port, goes to I-five to go to Eastern Washington to become a windmill and there's these individual packages coming from Amazon being delivered. Most of the calls we get about trucks are actually about the smaller delivery trucks at this point. When I started, it was more often huge gravel trucks making noise, now it's the people parking quasi-lawfully.
Yeah.
Absolutely, these are things that we're trying to address.
All right, that's one I never-
And here, it's our goal to, it's our goal to develop a program to address that. Currently, there are not, with the exception of retail businesses, there are generally not any type of loading requirements. Some developers, um, some multifamily projects voluntarily provide a loading area for move-in and move-out, but it's not a requirement. These are the kind of things that we're looking at, maybe they should be.
Well, and I wasn't even thinking at a residential level, which actually makes a lot more sense. I was more thinking in the areas where you're trying to, like a bike lane in downtown, right? There's businesses there, but there's also a bike lane.
Yes.
And there's cars and there's parking, so it's like the balance of all those things, which is exactly what I'm talking about. However, the idea of maybe a little bit of that in a residential area, not a bad idea.
That's the, the point of all of these goals is to give us, the goals and policies are to give us direction on how to develop that system. Which again, the previous iteration of the comprehensive plan was almost silent on those sorts of issues. So any direction, and please, direction like this is excellent right now because we don't have any freight policy to be changing, we're developing it.
I'd love to hear a summary of that, that freight mobility study. Uh, Commissioners, I don't know if you've been better than me in read it in its entirety, I have not done that. So I would love to hear an intelligent summary of that. Um, I have a question. Commissioners, what kind of feedback have you gotten on bike lanes? Cause I'll tell you, I've gotten zero positive feedback on the bike lanes, like literally zero. It is being done so badly and I've heard nobody say anything good about it. The comments I have heard like, well, gosh, they obviously didn't consult anyone who actually rides their bike when they made these route. Like, has anyone had positive feedback from the community on these bike lanes?
I've had no feedback.
Okay, and, and so I would like to challenge the city to consider that when, when you're deciding what mode of transportation should get priority on a street, the most direct, most convenient route, you should consider prioritizing pedestrians or folks on bikes. Because if you continue to prioritize vehicles and push the bikes off instead of creating protected bike lanes that are safe, uh, because you can create a safe, protected bike lane even on a major roadway, um, consider prioritizing that. Because if we're serious about wanting a multimodal system, we really have to build what allows for that. And if we continue to prioritize the convenience of a car that can easily go a couple miles out of their way over a bike that maybe they're being routed up a hill, which is just not, they're like, I'm, I'm not gonna ride a bike up the hill to get to work. If it was a straight shot down Colby, I'd bike every day, but I am not gonna ride three blocks uphill through the woods, down by, past grandma's house to get to work. Um, we, we need to change how we prioritize uh the roadways.
Okay.
Because when I say I've literally had no positive feedback on the bike lanes, I mean none, zero.
I've gotten two thirds negative feedback as the person who gets the complaint calls, mostly from drivers. I haven't heard from bicyclists one way or the other. Um, I've heard from a few people who were, oh, what a great thing and it doesn't inconvenience me, but I certainly understand, it's a work in progress.
I don't know that that bullet point necessarily encapsulates what Commissioner Chatters was saying. Um, I think that Alex Lark, if he were here, would love that bullet point, but I'm not sure that what she was saying was to completely prioritize um or change the prioritization on all roads.
Correct, no, I, I, I'm not saying on all roads and I think you made a really good point that we cannot prioritize every mode of transportation on every road. But really thinking about which roads uh would serve which mode of transportation more or less easily. And a direct route that matters to someone who is not in a motorized vehicle. It matters if there's access to a direct route, more so than if you're asking a car to maybe take a less direct route.
And I'm not the person who does those specific designs, but I do know that grade, distance, um, those elements are considered in addition to, we don't just say, oh, here's a quiet street, the bikes won't be in anyone's way. That's not the, the mentality that goes into it. We do look at um elements like the grade of the road, um, think, how far are we asking people to go out of their way? Um, you're right, every, every mode other than car has a harder time deviating. Even buses have a harder time because they can't negotiate every road. Um, so prioritizing, if we snap a point from point A to point B, that straight line should be prioritized for cars is not necessarily or even probably the best approach to that. However, when we also have a road built out to be able to handle the capacity of the vehicles, we can't say, well, you guys just go on these quiet side streets because we're gonna turn. It is a tough balancing act and I appreciate your guys, your whole group's feedback on how to set those priorities, that's what we're doing here. Thank you.
And really thinking about adding mechanisms to protect the bike lanes. Mapping out the bike lanes is one thing and, and that is appreciated. But protecting the bike lanes is something totally different and I don't think we've really begun that journey here in Everett.
Well, that would be, we're definitely working on it, I'd say we've begun it, but it is nascent. We have not, um, the other point I would make is um, as an engineer, sometimes it feels like the bicycle community needs to agree on what is the best treatment before we get ordered to make it. Because we have had bicycle advocates say, this is terrible and this, uh, other advocates look at the same thing and say, how great? And so there, until, until there is some collective agreement within the bicycling community on what is the best and most convenient system, it's a challenge and if we can't make all the bicycle advocates happy with one project, we're sure not gonna make everybody happy with it. But we're trying.
Driver that's happy with one system either, so.
I guess I would say that, I mean, I appreciate this conversation, but I think it's more complicated than just delineating um bike lanes from cars and I mean, we need to think about this in the context of existing land use and desired future land use as well. So while Colby may be flat, if you turn downtown into a bike lane and get rid of all the cars, we're gonna have a problem here, right? So you need to think about where we wanna go with land use patterns as well.
And Colby specifically is an example there. Um, bike route, bike, the bikes were not routed along Colby in part because through downtown, we have angled parking, which is anathema to bicycle lanes where we have parallel parking, which is, well, not ideal to have parking, is still far preferable to head in angled parking as we do along um Colby. And we had the existing roadway width without expending an extensive amount of funds to widen the road to be able to provide the bicycle facilities um on Hoyt that we have done with reduced conflict points, it's a challenge, absolutely.
Just, we are, I think, planning a bicycle master plan update, which is where we put all the focused study and, sorry if I was in the restaurant when you mentioned this, but uh, twenty-eleven is the current one.
Yes.
Um, and I think that's good, I was looking for actions, we don't have them on this version of the goals and policies, but I think that's gonna be in there. That's where you bring all of the latest uh data, research, outreach and get everybody in the same room to agree on the next iteration of our system.
Yes.
I think you're right about needing the bicyclist to agree, cause I, I had one community member that was like, you don't understand these bicyclists, man, you don't, you don't wanna get on their backs. So yeah, I, I think there are a lot of strong opinions.
So I wanted, well, I, I did wanna plug something for the bicycle thing, but I think I'll wait until we talk about, if we're gonna talk about later, I'll table it for now.
Oh, years later.
That's fine, oh, years later, we're gonna talk about years later?
The bike master plan update is post-comp plan, I don't know when, I don't know if anybody knows when, but it's, we know that it's due. Um, for example- Um, for example, light rail and the station locations were not known in twenty eleven. So there are not very many bike connections to light rail, which is gonna be a really important one. It's a great way to get to a station.
Yeah, that's.
But, but the comp plan sets the overall framework for these more detailed planning processes. Prioritization and all those sorts of things, so definitely let's.
Okay, I'll frame it then differently to be more general. Um, so I live near one sixteenth in Silver Lake. So I'm very biased with some of this stuff. Um, but one thing that I was thinking about when we were talking about the bike lanes is, um. Like a good enough bike lane or like a good enough intersection, um, that just popped into my head and I'm not sure. I, you can't have perfection, so I definitely would not want you to do that because you'd be spinning your wheels for a million years. But I am curious what the floor should be, because good enough is the floor in my opinion. And I don't know what everybody else thinks the floor should be, but the bike lane on one hundred and sixteenth is not a bike lane. It's a white painted line that is covered in tree branches ninety percent of the time, so it's very ineffective. Um, but I'm sure at the time when it was built, not that long ago, at least we had something.
Yes.
And that's that good enough and.
And.
Was it like, should we have used the money for that?
I would have to go back and look at that location to say for sure, but the width of.
Between nineteenth and thirty fifth.
Oh, I, I know, I know exactly what, what location.
Thirty five mile per hour road.
I would have to go look at the history of it to see when, because I swear almost every other year. There's a new best practice for bicycles.
Right.
And it's, it gets wider or we have a different, it, it keeps changing. I am not our expert. What I know is to go ask the expert today, because yesterday's answer might not apply. I would hope that when we installed it, it was the best practice, just best practice has gotten better.
Yeah.
I don't know the history and, yeah, you're right, it's a challenge, because if it's. Better than nothing and we have another care, another route with nothing, where do we prioritize it? This is a challenge.
Right, because, I mean, and I really grab on this one because the, there are inconsistent sidewalks. Really, there's lacking sidewalks on that road. We talked about trying to get to the, the bus. That road is ha, uh, I'll just say half county or really one third county or one third city, two thirds county, right? It's very difficult, but it's a heavily traveled road. It is, it connects two different cities, like, it's a big one, um, and so. When I, that, I just grab on this because the bike lane or whatever, the thick. Slightly thicker area to the right of the white, thick white line is, um, is just not enough. And it, it's not good enough for me because it doesn't help the people, it, bicyclists don't use it very often. Not a lot of pedestrians use it because it's super dangerous. So was it good enough to use that money to add a bike lane? Because now that road is probably at the bottom of the list to now receive a real bike lane or a real sidewalk. So, but I hear you, I understand what you're saying, but when we come back to safety and I know that's one of your guys' top goals, so I'm not debating that. But that is like a perfect example of, but it's not safe. So was it worth it?
And I would, again, I would just reiterate that we try to make every project meet the best guidance at the time. And the bike communities can't even agree on what is the best design today. We, so, I would have to revisit it. Um, I would hope. Well, no, no, I, I, I would be curious and I would like to see if possibly there are things that could be done. Low cost improvements that could be done. Um, I've got it on my list here to go investigate. I can't make any promises beyond, we will look at it.
That's okay, that's okay. This, my job is to bring up these gripes that, I mean, that me and other people share, right?
Completely understand.
General public. Um, I have a different question.
Ooh, please.
I had, I told, I really did my homework today. Um, you were mentioning that you receive all the complaints. That you have to look through them. Lucky you.
Yes.
Or whoever. I did wanna know, um, if you guys know, what is the general perception of the community? Of the transportation in Everett, because I don't know. My husband and I were talking about this, we think the roads are relatively well maintained.
So I don't, pavement maintenance goes to a different group. I don't hear those calls, so I can't tell you that. Um, the general perception from people is. That overall our roads work, we don't get a ton of complaints about traffic signals that are broken. We get more local neighborhood complaints. We get concerns from people that, I can't see this stop sign, very parochial concerns. Um, more often, we get speeding complaints very frequently.
Oh, yeah, I could see that.
Um, we get complaints about freight driving sometimes on roads where it's absolutely appropriate and sometimes on roads where it's not. Um, but freight concerns, most of the calls, there are, there is a vocal minority. That, uh, ask regularly for bicycles. It seems like it is a fairly small group, but I don't know how much they represent a larger group. But, um, of users, we hear from the bicycle community about needs for added bicycle facilities. Um, we hear from folks with, um. Specifically people with, um, mobility impairment about the shortfalls, but typically those again are very parochial. I can't cross this street.
Sure.
I have this location. They're probably indicative of a larger level of dissatisfaction, but we don't. With a few exceptions, um, largely seemingly, largely, um, coming from neighborhood groups. And that doesn't mean necessarily the neighborhood associations, but groups actively organized within neighborhoods asking for specific improvements. Otherwise, we pretty much hear parochial concerns. I can't cross the street at this location rather than bigger picture.
Okay, so I guess if I was in your position, I would say that, that's kind of good news, right? You're not hearing like the same anecdotal issues. You're hearing specific ones. Those specific ones definitely have themes, bike safety, access. Those are all in your goals.
Yeah.
That's great. I was more making sure that like.
Yeah.
Are the complaints and is the perception of the community aligning with the goals? And it sounds like the answer for the most part is yes, or we think. I mean, that's how I felt personally, but I didn't know if other people thought differently. Um.
Excellent question, thank you.
Yeah, so I think that's like, I mean, I could probably find some more. Oh, I really wanted to talk about this twenty minute thing.
Oh, the travel times?
Yeah, I think that was very cool. Um, first of all, twenty minutes sounds reasonable to me. Is that a number? Is that a new number for us? Is that like something we're already doing, like?
It is a.
Give me some background on that.
It is a new metric, to be honest. I think the twenty minute number came from planning as a, just, we're gonna throw out twenty minutes. But when I, when I kicked the tires on it, that actually works out to be. I'm gonna do my best, I'm an engineer, I'll do my best to not be overly technical, um, but. We grade how roads work, how facilities work with what's called level of service, just like your grades in college, A through F. Um, a twenty minute, um, travel time or less across the city. Roughly equates to a level of service C minus D plus. Which is actually, in an ideal system, somewhere between D and E. Is actually getting the most cars through. No one likes driving on an E road. But you're actually cramming a lot of cars through it. Um, we aim for C or D. As comfortable but fairly, fairly well-used. That, that actually is in line with a road that is reasonably comfortable but fairly well-used, not empty. Um, not roads where you can just make a lane change without looking. Um, so the number was, I possibly rather arbitrarily selected. However, um, it's actually got some, some really valid basis in terms of engineering. Based on twenty minute trip from the south end of the city to the north end of the city would be considered a level of service D throughput.
I think that's generally where it came from was observing about what would be a reasonable trip, uh, in congestion now. I've been encouraging the team, the different teams for all these elements to get as many measurable objectives, performance measures as possible. Because you know if you are meeting a goal or not, you can agree on what a goal is. Safe, have a safe community. Two different people could look at the same thing and arrive at a different, um, a different. Uh, opinion of where we're at. Uh, twenty-five percent fewer fatalities and disabling injuries. That is very clear whether you're achieving it or not. And so that was the goal of trying to have something numeric in there. I think the twenty and twenty came from just observations and there's, uh, two, two more little points on this. There are, um. I think we have a transportation system that is not fully balanced right now. There was a long time of, of reliance on, on vehicles only. To the detriment of pedestrian and bicycle systems and transit and all those sorts of things. So we're trying to right-size that. That winds up with a lot of transportation elements that talk almost exclusively about everything other than driving. I think it's important for us to have some clear goals and also to celebrate that we do a really, really good job. Of maintaining a productive and efficient and a safe vehicle transportation system, which is the backbone for everything else. Our freight drives on it, our transit drives on it, we live on it, we use it every day. Um, so it seemed like there's something missing there by not having a little bit more around what do we expect to preserve as we add these alternatives. We still need to get around by vehicle. It may not always be at top speed. And so that's.
And it, it seems like it's a really actually, the hardest part about that from my perspective as an engineer. Is it's actually a difficult metric to measure, because it's a lot of work to analyze corridor level of service. I still like it. I think it's an X and it makes more sense than the average delay at a traffic signal will only be thirty seconds. That doesn't mean anything to anybody. This actually means something to the average reader, so.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, I'm echoing, I appreciated it. Plus, I was thinking, um. Well, if it takes me twenty minutes at a car, it's probably the fastest, right? It's probably gonna take longer to buzz, gonna take longer if I walk or drive or, or ride a bike. Um, however, to maintain twenty minutes, I need the bus and I need walkers and I need the bicyclists, right? So we have a more equally room. So it's cool for cars, but it actually also is reinforcing diversity and travel. Because you can't all drive at the same exact time, otherwise we have longer peak commute times. Alright, well, I'll take a break for a little while.
Well, if you wanna travel anywhere in Everett within twenty minutes, live in central Everett, that's where I live. I can get anywhere in this city. In, in less than twenty minutes usually. It's, that's one of the best things about Everett. Um, so there are definitely some great things that we're doing here with transportation. I, I feel kinda like the pedestrian piece is, it's mentioned as part of this transportation system. But the elements of it are kind of separate, because what do we need for pedestrians? We need sidewalks and I mean, if we all want our eyes to start twitching, we can start a sidewalk discussion tonight. Um, and then there's also trails connecting our trails. So like, those are things that support our pedestrians. But they're kind of separate from this piece. So how do, how do we integrate that?
Trails is in Parks Recreation and Altitudes, but it is also mentioned in the whole pedestrian network, I think in the goal, not whatever number it was.
And, and that's an excellent example of like for the bicycles, why I want people to get on the same page. We have bicycle advocates who think that trails are a joke, they're for kids to learn to ride their bicycle on and there is no proper use for a trail system. In transportation, they're just a toy. And we have other people who say, I would never wanna ride my bicycle next to a busy road after riding. On a trail system that's separated and they're both professional bicyclists. This is one of those challenges. We mainly focus on the pieces that are basically, I mean, to get technical, the transportation element focuses mostly on the right-of-way. And on the improvements within the right-of-way for transportation. Many of our trails aren't actually in Everett's right-of-way. They might be. The P U D's right-of-way or they might be passing through a park. So that's part of why there's that break.
Demi, um, policy number TR twenty-five is construct, maintain and repair sidewalks, bike lanes and trails. For active transportation in accordance with adopted plans and design standards to encourage active transportation and, and improve health. So, it's.
Thank you, Alison. So there, the whole section on active transportation, which is four pol, four policies. Is there to back up the initial goal. Thank you. Yeah, I, I think that's important, because I, I don't wanna lose sight of, of that as, uh. Especially for families that don't have cars and, and kids, I, you know. Hoofing it is the first form of independent transportation for everybody's kid, so. Commissioners, additional thoughts? Do we wanna continue, um, holding these folks responsible for every failure of the Everett transportation system this evening? Or?
How about just the last twenty years? That's how long I've worked here. Before that, please don't blame me.
I do have a little question that's a little different than, I, I wanted to, on the, uh, the cut-through. So when I five box backs up or an accident or repair or whatever, and they're coming through Broadway. So if you're looking at the collision data, again, we have a really high, not necessarily, uh, fatalities so much down on Evergreen. But we have quite a few traffic accidents there. Can we tell the difference between? Yeah, is that a cut-through phenomenon? Is that, is that, are those stacked up because in all that cut-throughs coming through? And is that enhancing accidents there? And then, is that a safety issue because of that? Should we be prioritizing, yeah, so how, so how do, are we prioritizing maybe possibly reducing cut-throughs through Everett? Which seems like it's a very grandiose thought that we can do that.
First, yes, it is definitely driven, the congestion, gridlock and congestion drive crash rates. The gridlock and congestion we experience on Broadway northbound is intimately connected with gridlock on I five. Absolutely. You can look out and see how the road is flowing on Broadway and get a sense of how bad I five is. Because it's very clear. It's been quite some time, but when we did a study fifteen years ago. About a third of the traffic on Broadway down near Everett Mall was going all the way up to the flats. The interesting thing I took away from that was most of it was doing the drive in ten or fifteen minutes. But a sizable hunk was taking an hour or so, stopping for errands, picking up kids. They were actually making stops in Everett, so it's not. There's that cut-through. My wife used to be a manager of a restaurant on Broadway. She said, you could tell by business. How bu, how busy Broadway was, because when, oh my God, why do we have a line out the door? Oh, because the Broadway's gridlocked. That cut-through doesn't always have only negative impacts on the city. Um, but ultimately, we can't fix, I mean. We can't fix that gridlock in Everett except by supporting regional things. And that's actually where, uh, TR forty-four, policy forty-four comes in. Coordinate planning, design and financing of transportation systems with local school districts, other neighboring jurisdictions. And regional agencies. That policy is the crux of how we are trying to address that Broadway gridlock. Will aggressively support adding capacity to Broad, to I five, because the better I five works, the less we have to invest on Broadway. And that's the best answer I can give, unfortunately. We can't fix. I mean, if we won the mega billions, I would say Everett, let's spend some of our money fixing I five for the state so that we don't have to spend it all in Everett.
Well, I assumed it was a sport, so I, I mean, that would be.
Yeah, absolutely. But no, you're absolutely correct.
If it's a safety issue, right?
Yeah.
If it's just gridlocked, then it's gridlocked, but if it's actually causing a safety issue.
Definitely.
Then I think that's worthwhile to make it a priority.
It's a safety issue, it's an operational issue. It has, it has a great deal of, uh, and to be honest, outside of those incidents on I, on Broadway, on I five. We actually have sufficient capacity. If we can keep the interstate from breaking our system. We don't have to invest in added road capacity and why would we invest in added road capacity that we don't need? To Band-Aid a shortfall that exists on a parallel through facility.
And, and it's transportation too, because I've seen people, I come home through that, when it's blocked up, watching people try to cross those long locks or.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you're just, just, yeah.
It's a challenge.
So are there opportunities for us to ask for support for our roadways because we handle that overflow? Um, I mean, obviously, it, it makes sense for us to support capacity building that reduces our overflow. But we're taking the cost of that overflow, so does that open up an avenue for us to lobby for support for that cost? Or do, do we do that?
That's a great question and I hate to turn to look at, no, okay. Uh, the, the city engineer is shaking his head. He's actually gave me the subtle no head shake. So no, it doesn't sound like that's something that we're able to do.
I'll, if I could just say that everybody is in between somebody and somebody else. So how, you know, yes, Everett, a lot of people come straight through to go north of Everett. A lot of Everett residents go through Linwood. A lot of Linwood residents go through Bothell, um, it's kind of.
But we're Everett.
Yes. So, can't hurt to make the argument too.
There, there are funds available to address our local capacity, but the, the truth is, we shouldn't be building roads. To handle the overflow capa- we shouldn't be building roads to handle the overflow capacity from I-5, because then once I-5, I live in a dream world, once I-5 is actually fixed, we would have overbuilt our roads.
I agree, I agree with you, but I, but.
We don't want to overbuild our roads.
I was, I was, I was just in LA.
Yeah, not build it. There is not enough land.
And I did not, I didn't say once I-5 is widened to provide all the capacity. I said, once I-5 is fixed, maybe that fix is light rail that goes all the way to the Canadian border, and all of a sudden, people like my coworkers who live in Mount Vernon don't have to ride a bus that uses I-5 or a drive. And instead, I don't know what that fix is, but someday, I dream of a world where there is a fix and through traffic, through local jurisdictions, is only because you want to make a stop at that pizza place that you love in that town, and not because you're avoiding congestion. And I don't, we shouldn't be designing a system to Band-Aid the congestion.
Which I've seen eight thousand times, thanks to my kids.
You have kids too, don't you?
I have four kids. I have seen that eight million, but I, I wasn't suggesting that we should invest in increasing like our, like in building out more roads. I was suggesting that the cost we incur to maintain heavier use of our roads defers money away from other projects that would be highly beneficial to our residents. And, and so is there, I don't know. I, I'm in an argumentative mood today. People at work were working on my nerves, you know, the transit discussion. I'm trying to bring the community voices. And so if you ever need someone who, who's gonna make a really contentious argument on this issue, you call me.
Okay.
Because I, I think there is legitimately an argument to be made, because we have needs and, and our residents are telling us we have these needs, and I think it was Commissioner Ballard who mentioned, uh, on the seventh. Well, how do we prioritize when we don't know what, what budget we're looking at? How can we tell you what needs we want you to address when we have no idea where this funding's coming from or what funding levels we have? And so what do we tell our community members? Especially when we know we're incurring costs by maintaining roads that are absorbing capacity in this way, that is not our capacity. Uh, what can we do for our people? So I just want us to, to lobby really hard and make those arguments.
Well, I can plug one other thing that I promised my co-chair I would plug.
Please.
Um, well, obviously, roundabouts, just roundabouts, traffic calming roundabouts, roundabouts.
We are in the process of updating our safety plan citywide, including, um, suggestions for things like traffic calming. Roundabouts are actually two different things, and they mean completely different things. There are traffic calming circles that are the little ones that you have to slow down to drive carefully around. And then there are the big roundabouts that are actually there to replace traffic signals. And we have.
Have you sat in on a county, uh, in a county meeting where they're discussing roundabouts that have been installed around the county?
No.
You should do that.
But as a driver, I don't actually like them, but as a person, I know that they're good.
As, as a driver and as a traffic engineer, I really like them, um, for one reason. For one reason, the power doesn't go out at a roundabout.
No, it doesn't.
It, it doesn't suddenly lose all its capacity when there's a storm.
And they don't have to be expensive to build. I'm sure the fancier, the more expensive, but the less fancy, the less expensive. That's generally how it works.
Part of the catch with them is actually they take up a lot of real estate. And you can't go to most signals and build one without taking all the businesses on the corners away. But absolutely. They're, they're super fun for my little Miata, and they can accommodate my F-250. And so I like them because they accommodate the smallest and largest design vehicles that I typically work with.
Oh, yeah.
Anyhow, no, they're definitely on the list. They're definitely things we're considering.
We don't have very many, or any? Do we have any in Everett?
Properly, maybe, I think we have one that would actually be considered a roundabout, which would be at the end of Forty-first, going down towards Riverfront.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and that is a very large roundabout. We have a few others that are quasi-roundabouts in neighborhoods that were built as traffic calming circles, but so large that they function more as a roundabout. But the only real roundabout is at the bottom of Forty-first going to Riverfront.
Okay.
There was a proposal one, or there is a proposal one for a couple of them in Smith Island, uh, for new freight connections. It's true, they take more room than you can usually fit into a, into a built-out urban area, but that's a good spot for it.
Commissioners, uh, do we have additional questions or comments, or should we move to public comment?
Let's move to public comment, otherwise I won't shut up.
Okay, we'll restrain Commissioner Sullivan and move to public comment. Ayana, do we have anyone signed up to comment in person?
No comments.
Uh, online?
Also no comments.
Okay. I, I believe that this was our final agenda item. Uh, so commissioners, if you have no additional, uh, questions or, or anything to add, no?
I have one comment. Um, the questions that we sent out.
Oh, yeah.
If you have answers that, in comments that you didn't get to say, please just email them to me and I will add them to the list. And I appreciate all your comments and everything as we went forward. I apologize for.
Thank you for taking our grilling. This was really great information.
Happily.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we're adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening.